Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
One second.
We have a second.
I'm sorry, I should've said something. Mr. Hibs wasn't at the last meeting, so.
Oh, okay. We need another second.
Second.
That's okay.
Any more discuss- any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our next item is our confirmation and approval of our claims.
Our claims. This month we have a total of seven hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and twelve cents is our, is our total. Looking at the breakdown on our Fund One total for this month is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand and three dollars and twenty-five cents. I want to do a comparison to this time last year. At the same meeting, we had two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Were a difference of six thousand, seventy-three dollars and thirty-three cents less paid this, this period. What that, what that really means is obviously it's just a matter of timing on some payments. One of the things I want to call to your attention is the insurance payment. We used to make this to Eugene Wilson. It's now a payment you'll see in your, in your claims. The first insurance group, which they are essentially the same organization, for twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. That was a matter of not being paid in this particular pay period. Also, we do have a, a payment for the Kentucky State Treasurer of sixteen thousand, five dollars that normally you would see. This has been posted through the accounts payable in the past. So, one other thing I'd like to call to your attention is, as you know, a year ago, we created a Fund Twenty-One. You might recall that, that you've considered for approval and did, and did approve. Fund Twenty-One is where we move money from our schools for the red book accounting practices. Instead of them writing those checks out to school, we're writing them here now. So, to make sure that you understand, you will not see that check. Perhaps there's a reimbursement or something that we give them for some items that they purchased for. A good example would be the wrestling program on the startup. We help them with, with, that's a pretty expensive program to begin. Maths and things like that are pretty expensive. So, we give them a reimbursement there. So, you won't see a check written. It'll simply be a transfer made from Fund One over to, to Fund Twenty-One now. So, I want to make sure if you're looking for that check, you won't see that. We also, in our debt service, we have, for our Fund Four Hundred, we have made payments of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and twenty-nine cents in this pay period on principal and interest for three bond series. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have at this time. Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining. Item number fourteen thirty-three on page thirteen of the unit is page eighteen on bottom.
Have we been looking into energy savings?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, we have. I have a report I could probably share with you that would go back to, not this past year evaluation, but the one before. I can show you several items. Now, now have we done everything that can be done? The answer is no. We're still seeking. Mr. Hood, help me with the name of the organization we belong to and the, what do we share with Bullitt County?
C M, that one.
Yes, yes, yes.
The work that we, the work. That was where we, of course, all of our new buildings will be very energy efficient than we do here forward. And our architecture on top of all of that.
Oh, the new things we have. But, the, the, for example, some of the things like deep fryers in the cafeteria. We no longer have those. We have, what are they called?
Convien.
Convien. Convien, which are, they're not only healthier, they also reduce the energy. So, I take a look at a lot of things. Our HVAC in the high school had an antiquated system that was just a monster, just eating the energy as fast as they could. You know, every time it was tucked on. Now, we have energy saving individual room units that, for it might be, one compressor might conserve in two rooms. And so, they're not on all the time and they're very high energy efficiency with a high ser rate.
It's looking thirty thousand. That's just for the.
Yes, it is. We'll continue to look at that.
Is there any more discussion about the claims? I need a motion to approve the claim.
So good.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? And then we'll move on to item number three, which is our financial report.
Financial report this month, we have a number of things to share with you. We're reviewing the statement, balance for cash for the end of the year, June two thousand fifteen, where it will roll over one million, four hundred and eight dollars. That's a bit of an increase over last year when we rolled over one million, ninety-two, ninety-two hundred, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. So, this is somewhat of an increase, about three hundred and sixteen thousand increase. That has a, a number of things causes that, that may be the reason for that. Mainly, we would, we would like to think and, and believe that it's probably for, because we have reduced spending in some areas and been able to save somebody. Some of those are energy savings as well. Also, you'll notice in our childcare account, we have a balance of forty-five thousand, which is about sixteen thousand above where we were this time last year. And the childcare program, just like food service and other things operate in their own budget, not out of the general fund. They're both doing very well. And we're going to talk more about childcare just a little bit when we talk about this new facility that we're going to be asking you to consider for approval. In regard to our tax revenue, we recently posted two hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars into that account, which is really good news. As I shared with you in a previous meeting, we are very close to ninety-nine percent and some change on collecting all of our taxes. Out of six point four million, we have about forty thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars left to collect. That's amazing. That's not been that way every single year. We always have a good rate. This, this has been a very good, a very good year for us. Also, with our fiscal year sixteen state grant awards coming from the state, and let me just give you a quick refresher on this. The flexible focus funds, you've heard a lot about that, especially when they were being cut. They were, they were talked about quite a bit. Some things that fall into the flexible focus, professional development, E S S, extended school services usually for, for children. We catch up the gifted talent program, textbooks and things like the preschool, CARA preschool, we always refer to it as that. Well, we've got some really good news for you. Speaking of the CARA preschool award, we actually have been awarded two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars more than we anticipate. The budget that you, preliminary budget that you saw recently, that did not, that was not included because we just recently received that. So, that is huge. That'll be a big help to us. In, in our general fund, we're using a good deal of general fund money in order to operate preschool, just like everyone else in the state has had to do. This is not unique to us, but in order to have a preschool, you have to use general fund money. Because our, we're not really sure exactly how the money was increased, when it happened. We're going to be looking at that after this meeting and try to find out. But it's good news, I'll tell you that. And we did check to make sure there wasn't a mistake in overpayment. You know what that means, and that was not the case. So, we're very excited about that. We'll, we'll continue to research that, see what else we can find out about that. Let me tell you about a few summer projects that we have this summer in the, in the, what we call it Tiger Cafe, also known as the Barstown High School Cafeteria. There have been some major renovations, which we all will recall. The lovely nineteen sixty green glass block has been painted. It is a special process to paint that. It looks absolutely awesome. The columns have been painted and all the surrounding walls have been painted. We also have some new, more modern doors from nineteen fifty-nine, the current doors we have, and they, they have served their purpose. And it's time to upgrade that area. We're going to be able to do that about the second week of August. Also, there'll be a new signage throughout, similar to what you see behind us here, and some other, other signs that we have. Some of the other buildings have followed that pattern as well. And then our Hall of Fame display that we have in the Tiger Cafe will also be updated and give us some space to grow that program some more. We're about to run out of space. So, we'll be able to have at least ten or so years in advance on that particular wall and then have the other wall to work with in the future. So, great news about the Tiger Cafe is it's all funded by Fund Fifty-One and not the general fund through the food service program. So, very good news there. Our playground at the elementary school, you might recall back some time ago, we brought that to your attention. We're, we're underway over there with all of the old playground equipment that has been removed and we're about ready to do some leveling. The rain has been, it's been a terrible year to build a playground or probably anything else outside for that, for that matter. But the rain has slowed us down, but we're underway there. Just to refresh your memory, that, that was a three-way project where the Barstown Elementary P T O helped fund part of that. And we also used some general fund money on that, as well as daycare has kicked in on that as well. So, it's been a three-way project and we're looking forward to getting that underway. And then, of course, we had an unforeseen recently, the sewer line from the Fifth Street of, into the high school had to be replaced. Had a cost of around four thousand dollars. But that's an upgrade that you'll, that you won't see, but certainly is necessary. That's all I have on the financial report. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer those.
Will the playground be completed by the beginning of the school?
If the weather will cooperate, that's a plan.
The monsoon season stops, we will have a playground.
The plan was to be installed this week, but we're probably two weeks behind. But if, if, just so you know too, if replacing the playground has been here since nineteen ninety-four.
Along our next item is the superintendent's report.
Our superintendent's report, I want to share with you today, we have some folks here with us, but before they get up, I want to tell you a little bit about the history with our Family Resource and Youth Service Centers. These were created and enacted back in nineteen ninety in schools throughout the state of Kentucky, by our Kentucky legislators, in the, what you might recall, the Historical Educational Reform Act, known as CARA. It was, it was a major change. That was, that was nineteen ninety. That was twenty-five years ago. And we are celebrating our, our twenty-fifth anniversary as a state and also, we're not quite. We're about five or six months away from being a total of twenty-five years, but we're going to go ahead and call it twenty-five years. Because we started our program in January, which I think most people in the state of Kentucky did back in nineteen ninety. But it is the twenty-fifth year and, and all of the things that we experienced, those of us who were here then, back in ninety, and saw that educational reform taking place all up through the eighties, to me, this is the single most important part of the CARA Reform Act. The whole mission of the Youth Service Center is to remove barriers for learning. And I can tell you, we have two folks with us here today, Catherine Webb and Josh Payne, who do that, that almost daily. They're unsung heroes that we seldom see the work that they do, but we certainly realize it in the classroom. They just quietly work behind the scenes and get a lot of things done. How they remove those barriers, there's a number of ways they do that. They do that throughout the year and beginning of the year, the summer, there's really no rest for them. So, Josh and Catherine, with that being said, I'm going to ask you to come forward and tell us about your program. I will tell you that I always get this wrong, so I'm looking at my notes here. The Family Resource Center, they serve the early childhood through the fifth grade. And the Youth Service Center, they serve the sixth grade through the twelfth grade. So, we have a, a high school unit and then we have the, our middle high school unit and then lower unit. And we were able to add, what's it been, two years ago? Three, two?
Three more.
So, we added a second unit. Yeah, that's right. And just as Josh, second year, but that's right, we did. We added about four years ago. We were able to have a second unit. So, Catherine, floor is all yours.
Thank you for those kind words and thank you for inviting us to share a little bit about what we've been doing. Our focus, the Family Resource Center, again, that serves birth through fifth grade, our focus this year has kind of shifted. You know, the need continues to increase every year and we just have to come up with new and innovative programming to meet that need. Some things increase and some things change. And so, we've really been focusing this year on kindergarten readiness. As you all probably remember, in January of two thousand and fourteen, the officer of the governor released a statement saying that about forty-nine percent of our students in the state started kindergarten ready to learn. It was a little bit higher than that here in Barstown. It was about sixty-three percent. But our focus has been last year and is continuing to be kindergarten readiness. I worked with Ms. Blackman when a title, the title programs were being monitored and we're just trying to make sure we get parental involvement increased and, and have proper record of that and do what we can to help families feel like they are prepared for their kindergarten, kindergarten students to come to school. And so, this summer I hosted a program called Passport to Learning. And it was for families, not just in the city school system, but also in the county school system, who have children birthed at five. It was a week-long program. The families who participated were with us two hours a day. First, they participated in our summer feeding program and, and had a meal together. And then they came back to the elementary school and we had a music time with Carmel Bowman, and I don't know if any of you know Carmel Bowman, but she is outstanding. And I think that was probably the kids' favorite part and parents too. And then we had the, the parents and the children split up. And our focus was the parent guide from the, the governor's office of early childhood. And there are five components in that parent guide. Social and emotional development, general knowledge in mathematics, health and physical well-being, approaches to learning and language and communication development. So, each day, we took one of those components and focused on it. And myself, along with four other coordinators, hosted each day and gave parents information on how they can get their child ready within that component. And while the children, the parents were learning, the children were learning activities that were also related to that component. Then they came back together and the, the goal was for students to then teach their parents what they'd been learning. And it was a big success. We had about sixteen families who came. We had about forty who signed up, but we had about sixteen who came. And it, it was really a great program that we did in July, the first week of July. Our partner was the Nelson County Early Childhood Council, and they were able to pay for two early childhood assistants to come and assist us with that. And then also the Family Resource and Youth Services Center coordinators from Nelson County. I developed the program to increase preschool kindergarten readiness and offer our parents the opportunity to participate in a program similar to the Toyota Born Learning Program that some of you may have heard about. The county was awarded a Toyota Born Learning Grant last year. There are three of them that are going to be in the county. And we applied and we were not selected. However, I got a call yesterday that we have been selected. So, that is great news. We're going to have fifty-six hundred dollars to implement the program over the next two years. And this is a year-long program. There will be about seven sessions for parents and their children to attend in the evening. And it really is just a teachable moments program. Parents will come in and have, sit down to dinner with their children and will help kind of model how that works because not all families are able to sit down and eat together. And then, again, the parents will split off and learn some skills that they can use to help their children be kindergarten ready. And the kids will play and then they'll come back together and, and model those skills together. And so, the, the grant will pay for a facilitator, for childcare, for those meals, those seven nights that we do the program in the evening. And it will take place at the primary school because the goal is for the child to be ready and familiar with the school they're going to attend in kindergarten. So, we're really excited that we were able to receive that grant and we look forward to working with the county coordinators too and making sure that Born Learning is a big success in both the city and the county. So, that's kind of been our focus. And of course, the, the same programs that we've been doing all along, we're still doing. Today, we were at Walmart this morning doing the Bounce Back to School program and helping about thirty families with new uniforms. And we just keep on going and we just keep on going. You all have any questions about the Family Resource Center?
How many kids do you take care of during the year?
I would say that our services touch every student because we don't just, you know, our funding is based on our free and reduced lunch count, but we, we provide programming for every student. Mr. Payne provides anti-bullying programming and lots of other stuff that I'm sure that he's going to talk about. And then I do a lot of bullying program in the classroom and other, you know, other, right, we, we touch every student, I would say. Every student does, gets hurt.
Have you seen the financial need grow?
We have. And our, when I started back in two thousand and three, our allocation from the state was ninety-four five. And this year, it's about seventy-seven. So, I appealed to the state for several years before we were granted another center, which we're so grateful because now we have seventy-seven times two. But, you know, that, that funding has gone down. And it's not necessarily because the state has allocated less to us. It's because there are more students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch across the state. So, that pot has to be split up more. But yes, the need increases.
These kids that y'all work with, were they, any of them attending the early childhood center?
Oh, yes, yes. And, and we hope that we get more, you know, the, the challenge is with the Passport to Learning Program and I think with Born Learning is to reach those people who aren't in school yet. Because most of the people who attended our Passport to Learning Program did attend the Early Childhood Center. So, while that's great that we're able to, you know, teach them these skills, I'm kind of already getting it. So, we hope that we can reach out more to parents who don't have their children in any type of preschool, either county or city, and that, that we can help them become kindergarten ready too. And, and when we wrote our proposal, we talked about several ways that we plan to engage the community and, and try to find more kids who aren't in preschool. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll be brief. Again, my name is Josh Payne and I'm the Youth Service Center Director. The schools that I do serve are the middle school and the high school. Today, I just want to talk about a few programs that I have coming up. This is my third year. My first two years, just kind of rolled with the flow on several things. I'm starting to spread my wings more and more, adding pieces in. So, I have two new programs that I've input this year. One just been, that I just did over the summer. It was the Next Step Camp. It was a transition camp for sixth grade students. And as you guys know, sixth grade is a rocky time coming in from elementary school. Kids are nervous, new classes, more students. They're back on the bottom again. You go from the top and you're back to the bottom. So, the focus was to reduce students' anxiety and help them miss some of those potholes that they may run into. And just help them be more prepared so they can be more successful in middle school. So, we did that program. It was a three-day program, heavily focused along with the councilor, the new councilor there, Mr. Morning. He was a great asset with that as, as, as well as Mr. Ryan Clark and Ms. Taylor in that camp. Some of the things that we did, we went on a full tour of the school. They got to meet some teachers. They played different games. They had a family feud game where we got advice. We got advice from the outgoing sixth graders of what they would give to the incoming sixth graders. So, that was some really interesting and good advice that they got from them. We also talked to them about understanding the social scene. Of course, the social scene changes a lot. You have more peer pressures. You have more activities, more events, more clubs, all of those type of things. So, we talked about that. Dealing with stress, anger and peer conflicts. Of course, peer conflicts are through the roof in, in middle school. And making good choices. We talked about those things. Of course, again, more peer pressures, social media. We talked a lot about social media. And then we also got into the, the side of it as well of the academics. You know, being in school every day, knowing how to get good grades, the student setting goes for themselves throughout the semesters, and then planning and preparing for the future. So, those are kind of the, the overviewing topics that we discussed with them. They had a lot of fun. Had about sixty-five kids come out, which was pretty good for the first time. And hopefully, those numbers increase as we continue to do the program over the years. So, that was a big success. Mr. Crumbby actually got to come out when we were working on lockers. We worked on lockers there and it was, it was very entertaining. The students were very nervous. That's one of those things that make them really nervous. So, we got to, to master those locks, did some races with that. So, it was a good time. They really enjoyed it. My second program that I'm about to do is coming up in the high school. And it's something a little different to getting parent, getting parents involved. I know, you know, the parent involvement decreases as students get older, but the whole purpose of this event is to, is to help parents, to help them, help their students navigate issues that they may face. So, what we have on open house night, we're going to be doing different sessions. We're going to be doing three different sessions. We'll all have Mr. Roland Gabbard coming in to talk about substance, excuse me, he'll be talking about stress, anger and peer conflicts, dealing with the emotions, you know, students dealing with academics, becoming really stressed out, and what some of those things can lead to and steps that, that parents or guardians can take in helping their student deal with those issues. We're also going to have Ms. Stacy Bush from the Reach Program. She's going to be talking about substance abuse. And that's someone that I work with closely on a regular basis. So, she'll have a, a session about substance abuse and underage drinking. And then we'll have Mr. Scott Harvey coming back in. He actually did a presentation for us back in February for the middle school. That was, that was wonderful. And he'll be back again with us to talk about the role of social media. So, that'll be a good time. If you, you guys want to come out and hear some of the speakers, feel free. If you know any parents or guardians, encourage them to come out to, to get some of those tools to help their students throughout the year.
Mr. Payne, would you say social media is possibly the number one, the toughest thing to deal with as they transition from school to school?
Uh, I would.
The peers and all that stuff, I mean.
I would say so, just because it comes around, it has so many different faces to it with, with students. Picking on other students on social media, but then you also have the downside of it when, when students make bad choices and they start to send the, hey, send me a picture, send me a picture of yourself. And then you send that picture of yourself and then everybody in the school has it. And then the student's going even further downhill at that point because everybody else has their hands on it. So, that's a good one, just to, you know, really inform those kids on how to use social media. No different than handing a kid a keys to a car that can't drive. Has no, no business driving.
And the parents, you know, interaction in that social media as far as, you know, allowing them to use it and things like that.
And we try to bring that information into the parents as well. Just in the spring semester for the middle school, we had a social media night for the middle school parents because a lot of them have no clue what's going on. So, giving them the, you know, giving them the tools to, to have a better understanding to, to nip some of those in the bud. Parental notifications, this going into the settings, constantly checking up on them, seeing what kind of apps that they have going. Just those different types of things. Any other questions?
Do you have a need for clothing, uniform clothing?
Always, always have a need for the clothing. If you guys ever have any, feel free to drop it by either the high school or over to the Family Resource Center, even if it's regular clothes. We do have accounts at Goodwill, so we can take regular clothes and gently used shoes as well. Where if you guys drop it off to us, we take it there. We get so much sense to the dollar. And a lot of times, if we don't have the clothing in the center, then we'll give them a voucher to go there and get uniform clothing or other needs.
Josh, you're located in the high school. The best way to get there is to the main entrance at the high school. Catherine, you have two entrances. You can go through the elementary school and through the office that way, or you have an outside entrance that, just down from the main entrance on the left-hand side there.
Also have a middle school office that's right by the arm in the middle school.
And I have a primary office also.
Thank you.
Well, there's no more questions. I appreciate the time. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Excellent job, you all. Appreciate it.
We're going to get at it, get away.
His office is the whole lot.
There you go. That's right. And Madam Chair, that's the last item I have, the City Council report today.
Okay. Very good report. Our next item is the TEL survey.
You all recall, we've been anxiously awaiting the TEL survey. We've discussed this numerous times over the years. Just a reminder, this acronym, Teaching, Empowering, Leading, and Learning, is what our TEL survey stands for. It's something that our entire state uses. It's also used across the nation. Not every state uses this, but a lot of them do. Essentially, what we have here is how do we rate ourselves? How do we see ourselves doing in certain areas? And so, of course, the survey would be impossible to include absolutely everything. It does a fairly good job of asking some questions that we can take a look at and we can do a self-assessment. And as we look at continuous improvement, what can we do to improve in some areas? There are actually a few questions that probably could be improved and we could get better answers, which I think that will probably be tweaked as time goes on. But in order to give us some consistent information, it has been the same the last three times we've taken it. We'll refresh your memory that every two years on odd school years is when this is available. And we will use this for, you've heard of the C-SIP, the C-DIP, those things. This is where we get a lot of those needs assessments, right here, through the PEGES and P-PEGES. You're familiar with building the growth plans. And this is a lot of where those come from, particularly in the P-PEGES. That data comes from this document. So, what we want to do is just take a look at this. We want our schools to be teacher-centered schools. And what do we mean by that? Well, this research that we've been looking at, it says that schools that have high achievements have positive working conditions. And that's one reason it is so important. Obviously, we talk about curriculum a lot. We talk about the standards that we teach. But the working conditions are so important. So, you know, there's various reasons why you might get scored one way or the other, depending upon the time of the year. You know, a couple of years ago, we were marked down. One of our lower areas in facilities and resources were in the copying area. And one of the reasons maybe that that happened, to refresh your memory, was that we made a major change with our copying company, who we were leasing from, how we were doing it, and put codes in on some of the copying machines. Well, that was done approximately in February. We took the survey in March. We didn't get a very positive result on copying, or as positive as we could have. So, there's little things that affect that, which is kind of, those little things like that, you kind of have to overlook and move on and look at the big picture and then look for trends and patterns that we see and look at how we can improve some things. So, if you'll pull that up if you haven't already, what I want to do is, actually, it should be at your place there. There should be a paper document that I think would make this a lot easier for you. And I have highlighted, I just circled a number or letter on your page there that might be easier for us as we go over this. So, the first thing that we had was time. Just as you look at this, look at the very top right-hand, and you'll see the first column has to do with the Kentucky average. And then, the second column has to do with the Bardstown Independent Average. So, some of these we'll look at and we'll look at the state average. There's another thing that you can do. You can go back and look at 2013, 2011, and also make some comparisons there. Unfortunately, this document doesn't give us that. We have to physically go back to that. But that's what your schools will be doing. They will actually be going back, looking at trends from three-year data and also comparing it to the state, some things of that nature.
Did they have to give any kind of explanation why they rated?
No, no. It could be that the question was misinterpreted. Either way, might be a way that they would ask. And there were some responses on whether you agree, strongly agree, disagree, or strongly disagree would have been the four choices. And you really just kind of see the agree percent here. Okay?
Any ideas on F, teachers have sufficient instructional time to meet the needs of all students?
I do. I've got an explanation for you.
If I just shut my mouth and let you get there?
Well, that's a thought, but we can. I do want to say one more thing. Mr. Roby's rushing me there, so I'm going to get there. But one more thing about this I would like to say is, you know, we are using it for improvement. So, one of the things I've challenged you with is, as we've talked about, that we were going to use one of these goals that I would identify, and then we would take that goal and try to work to improve that particular goal. So, as we go through this, I'll point the one out that I would like to take a look at. Obviously, you have as much say in that as I do, if not more. So, feel free to, if we go through here, highlight the ones that we look at. Now, I'm not going to look at all of them, but the ones we're going to look at, I have circled there. First of all, the class size there at the top, the very first one. A, you can see as far as the average for the state, it's about the same. And of course, we all know that we had smaller classes. We all feel that we could be more effective with a smaller number of students in a class. That's just one of those things that we have to deal with. How do we change that? We are not exceeding the maximum number, so, you know, what else can we do there? That might be one of those we can't do a lot about, just as an example. Now, moving along. Item B, teachers have time available to collaborate with colleagues. Well, that's certainly important, more important than ever now that we're doing and teaching the way that we're teaching. I think you're going to see an improvement in that area. We talk about our PLCs, and I know you're very familiar with that. And these groups of folks are usually like a group of sixth-grade teachers on the same team would be able to plan together, be able to plan, and so, we would have the same standards in the classrooms and so forth and so on. I think that's only going to improve. That was at sixty-two point seven. And then, let's get to F. It says, "Teachers have sufficient instructional time to meet the needs of all students." You know, one of the things that we suspect are happening there is that there has been a major push, as you know, since 2011 to push these new standards in the way we teach. I think it would be safe to say that teachers feel overwhelmed, that there's been a lot pushed on them and there's just not enough time to cover it all. Will that improve? There's, you know, there's things like, now, we're starting to get a handle on all those new standards, but now, we're getting ready to adopt social studies standards. We're getting ready to look at the new science standards, and of course, we have the world language coming on. The upper grades have been used to these standards, but the lower grades are going to be looking at everywhere from kindergarten all the way up on new standards. So, we feel that that's probably a reason for that. So, they just feel like there's not enough time in the day to get all that done. Will that improve? We think it will over time. We want to be sensitive to that. Moving on to the next page there, to facilities and resources. On item A, teachers have sufficient access to appropriate instructional materials. We think that's very important. We're at eighty-nine percent there. We round that off, which is above the state average. Moving down to D, teachers have access to reliable communication technology, including phones, faxes, emails, technology pieces such as that. That's at ninety-seven percent satisfaction. Item G, the school environment is clean and well-maintained. My goodness, ninety-six point two percent. We've got a custodial housekeeping and maintenance staffs at second to none. I mean, that's awesome news. So, you know, we do identify some areas that we want to improve on. We also are able to identify some areas like this, and we certainly plan on sharing this with those folks and celebrating this accomplishment. Moving over to community and support, community support and involvement. Got item B marked there. The school maintains a clear two-way communication with the community, eighty-nine point one. I feel particularly good about that one because quite some time ago, maybe back 2007 or '08, along that line, we began to talk about school-to-home communication. And I'm pleased that that's at eighty-nine. Yes, we could, you know, we've got room to improve. We have a few more points there that we could gain, but that's a concerted effort. And that was due to this Board of Education's direction to the central office staff and the superintendent. So, congratulations to you for pushing that early on. The school does a good job of encouraging parent and guardian involvement. Item C, according to the teachers, we're at eighty-nine point three percent. They say that we do a pretty good job there. Then, take a look at F. Parent, guardian, support, teachers contributing to the success of students. That's down to sixty-nine percent there. But I don't want you, as a board member, to feel overly concerned about this being something that's way low. It is a little higher in the state. The seventy-five percent is certainly not a great number. So, it's something that we're going to address. I think it's safe to say that this has been some time that we've been trying to address this. This may be one of the more difficult challenges that we have is parental involvement. How do you increase that? You're going to be seeing some things here pretty soon. We just completed the monitoring process with the State Department. We were one of the lucky ones that were chosen. There's so many school districts every year that they look at things, and this is an area that we've been asked to look at. And we have a very specific plan that we're going to be implementing to do the best we can to continue to increase in that area. So, moving on to item H, the community we serve is supportive of the school. Eighty-eight point two percent was in agreement with that. Managing student conduct, this one, you can see our numbers there. They're all fairly medium numbers, I think. Again, this is a perception from staff on how it's dealt with, how conduct of students and how discipline is dealt with. It's, I think it's acceptable. I think there's some area there we can improve on. We will be addressing those at the school levels on how we can do that. Overall, I do think we're very excited about a program that we're looking at school-wide. We're not sure where we are. We're in a bit of a pilot state this coming school year. In fifteen, sixteen, we're going to be looking at a program called The Leader in Me. And I'm sure you've all heard of Stephen Covey, his son Sean Covey. Stephen and Sean, before his death, they put together a plan for schools. And it's a very powerful program. We will be doing a bit of a, I want to call it a pilot, but some schools will be doing a book study. Every new staff or every staff member has a copy of the book. Certified staff member has a copy of the book this year, The Leader in Me. And by the way, Mr. Downs, if you will remind me, I'd like to have a copy for each one of these board members as well. And so, I think you'll see, it's all about accepting responsibility for your behavior is the main part of that. I think you'll see this area probably increase as we are able to implement that program.
Do you think the uniform policy supports who uniforms feeds into that?
Yes, yes, it does. It does. It's more and more difficult, yes, to enforce that. So, yes, that would be some of the, you know, if we didn't have the uniform policy. I think we gain a lot from it, but, you know, we're going to get marked down maybe as a result of it.
I was going to say, you mentioned on the previous page, community support and involvement, item F. Do you think that directly ties into the managing student conduct? I mean, every single one's in indicators. Of all the different categories here, this is the only one that we're below the stake in, every single one. Is that a key to improving that?
Well, and I think it could be. And remember, these are perceptions and, you know, it's.
A perception is reality, as they say, in a certain context.
Yeah. So, yes, absolutely. It sure could feed into it. You know, probably you make an excellent point. I mean, I think if you look at every one of these areas, it's, when I started, I read the piece that, or to you off the website on the TEL survey that talked about that there's a direct correlation between a positive working condition and high student achievement. So, yeah, I mean, I think they all intertwine, they do, especially that one. It's a good point.
As far as the dress code, parents ought to be very aware of what they are. Kids should not walk out the house if they're not dressed appropriately, bottom line. It's the way I see it.
In a perfect world.
You're in a perfect world. You know, sometimes we get our standards, we raise the bar. When things get so much better in classrooms, whether it's the student conduct, you expect more of them all the time. So, perception is a reality, but at the same time, when they're acting very well, you expect them to be better for them. So, sometimes your perception, "He did just a good day." In a tough school system, the bar may be very low. And I think we have, our bar here is set pretty high. And so, sometimes that perception, "They could do better," sure they could. We always can. But, so sometimes, there are some very conflicting responses here that, to your argument, just a perception of what they do in the classrooms.
I think we have to look at the whole document and assess it from that standpoint, not just one item or whatever. We're over on teacher leadership now on Q six dot one. And a few of these I want to call to your attention. Teachers are recognized as educational experts, according to them. We do recognize them, and that's eighty-nine percent satisfaction. That's a pretty good level. And some others on B, teachers are trusted to make sound professional decisions about instruction. That's a good ninety-one, solid ninety-one percent there. And D, teachers are encouraged to participate in school leadership roles, ninety-two point four percent. And then, here we have Q six dot five. Teachers have an appropriate level of influence on decision-making in their schools. And that's a sixty-three percent or sixty-four percent when you round it off. You know, the question comes back to us there that, you know, we have an excellent model for students to, for teachers to have input on decision-making to the site-based council making. So, that's something we're going to try to take a look at and find out maybe where the gap is there because there certainly is an excellent model in place to help resolve Q six dot five. Moving over to school leadership. Most all of these are fairly positive. They may, in some cases, exceed the state average. Some cases, they fall below. But it may, so, I'll just let you kind of look at the school leadership part there. I'm not pointing anything out in particular. Hang on one second here, maybe a little. No, that's not, that's not the one. Looking at the bottom of that, seven point three. This is, this could kind of be considered an overall summary of your school. You kind of see the items A through I. We kind of looked at that and thought, "This would have been a really good item to have at the very end of the survey." But you can kind of see, again, those are fairly positive throughout. I would like to think that leadership issues, the satisfaction is at eighty-four percent. You just run down, facilities and resources, we're at ninety percent overall. The use of time in the school is eighty-four percent. Professional development's at eighty-five percent. Teacher leadership's at eighty-eight percent. So, these are, these are pretty good numbers down the line, so, fairly positive. Moving over to professional development. On Q eight one dot, excuse me, Q eight one, Q eight dot one, we will look at item D. Professional learning opportunities are aligned with the school's improvement plan. Now, look at that. That's ninety-six percent. You have a few concerns about some of those lower. This is one that I feel really super good about. Because think about what this is saying. If you're trying to improve your school, in other words, you've identified areas that you want to be better at, what our teachers are saying is that the professional development that they receive is right on target. Ninety-six percent satisfaction rate. I think we had F, decision-making about professional development is guided by teacher evaluation system. We've talked to you a lot about the new PEGES, and I think this speaks volumes about that program. It's well-aligned. You start seeing things coming together now. That's one of the things that I think that we do gain from this survey. That's one of the things that I think that we do gain from this survey. Then look at, I am skipping over quite a few here, but look at the J. In this school, follow-up is provided from professional development. We're right at 70 percent there. We think that's an area that we're certainly going to be much more intentional about and make a greater effort to remind folks when we do review. Obviously, the professional development that we're doing now has a lot to do with the curriculum, the way we teach, our standards. We really kind of feel like that maybe we are reiterating what we teach in those professional development sessions, but maybe we're not doing it intentionally enough. Then looking at I, L, I mean, L. And this is one that I want us to consider. Professional development is evaluated and results are communicated to teachers. When we attend professional development trainings, and I think you, when I say "we," this Board of Education superintendent, we are usually given some sort of rating system at the end of the session. Do you recall that? You complete that rating system. You probably don't get to see very often what those rates are, but what we would plan to do at any professional development we do, we would provide a rating system, and then we would convey that information through a faculty meeting or even through an email, a distribution email on what the feedback was on that particular professional development. That would be an easy way for us to resolve that and move that 66.7 to a much higher number very quickly. So that is the area that I would like for you to consider, that I have talked to you about, included in a growth area for us to work on as a district. Okay. Moving on over to Q9 point one, looking at item C. Teachers are assessed, teachers use assessment data to inform their instruction. That's 96 percent. Powerful statement. Very good stuff. And then F, teachers are encouraged to try new things to improve instruction. 92 percent. Another very, very powerful statement. And then look at I. Folks, if we can get 99 percent of any group together at any one time, and you can get a 99 percent agreement, something must be going on good. The curriculum taught in this school is aligned with Kentucky Core academic standards. 99.4 percent say yes. And then I think our last two on the back page there, overall, we're at 87 percent. Overall, my school's a good place to work and learn. At this school, we utilize the results from the TEL survey as a tool for school improvement, and 87 percent say yes on that, agree with that. So what have we done today? We've looked at this survey. We have a fair idea of some teachers' thoughts. I'm also going to say that this does include principals as well, but we have some idea of some things that we can look at, some things we're going to work on. What do we do with this? Each individual school had their own report. This report was made up and compiled from the five different schools. So they all have their own. They will be doing, going through this exercise as school begins. They will be identifying some areas, creating some plans. Some of those principals will be actually building growth plans off some of these on how they're going to be improving in those areas. And then at the end of the year, we'll review their progress. So it's all about continuous improvement, and this is a very important part of that needs assessment, so.
I feel there needs to be a comments column, because if you get comments, somebody rates something low, and they put a comment in there, at least you know why. And if it's, if there's a trend with all, each one of these different categories, then, you know, you can look at and say, well, we can deal with this, we can't deal with it, or then follow up with them and let them know why they can or can't.
Here's a thought on that, and again, look for trends and patterns, and, you know, you'll see a low number occasionally, and you really don't know why, but that's part of this process. They're going to be sitting down, they're going to identify, kind of like we have. We've identified one. They're going to identify one or two or three, and then they're going to have this conversation. And they're going to, they're going to say, why did we score ourselves like this? And then those answers will come out, and that dialogue will take place. I think one of the reasons the comment place is not there, which is really a very good idea, this survey, there's really not a good time to take the survey. This survey usually comes in the month of March. We're in full gear getting ready for testing. So it's some consideration given to teachers on making a little quicker to try to get to it. It certainly is a very important activity that they do, and it's, I wish we could carve out some time, say, this is part of your workday, and you have, you know, you have an hour with nothing else on your mind, go complete this. But it just doesn't work out that way. They're usually very rushed in trying to get everything accomplished. I will remind you, and I failed to mention it, one of the greatest things about this is the state average for completing a thing was 89 percent, 89.3. We had 90.5, so 91 percent participation. So we really pushed from, you know, to get folks to do that. In order to be able to score you, it had to be at least 55 percent. So, you know, we really have, I think, a true assessment of what our folks think, or why they think that, Mr. Rowley, those comments would be helpful, but we'll get those comments as we start breaking these down, getting into them. Okay?
To me, so many of these go back to school leadership, and the managing student conduct is under there as well, so it goes hand in hand. I really feel because of those low numbers that we really can't just ignore that.
Yes.
And we could deal with it as a leadership avenue.
Right. Those are things we're going to continue to do from a district level, and that's "The Leader in Me," I'm really excited. It, you know, programs do not solve problems. I'll be the first to admit that. You well know, I, we don't jump on programs, like a lot of school districts, next thing coming down the pike, they're on the wagon with it. We don't do that. We look at things, and that's why, one reason we're going to take a year to look at this program. We're going to look at this book, we're going to, we're having a speaker come in here on Thursday, Thursday, no, yeah, Thursday morning of this week, coming from the main office. It's a pretty big deal to get that person here. They're going to be speaking to all of our principals, Mr. Sberry, and so, you know, it's started a big process. And you're right, that's where it starts, and I think that's our responsibility with our leadership to-
When is this?
It'll be Thursday, and you are invited if you'd like to attend. You'll be in this room at nine o'clock. And if you'll come at 8:30, he'll feed you breakfast.
Write that down.
I know he's coming down. All right. That's the TEL survey. Any other comments or questions, we'd be glad to address them. And again, we have identified L for your information, and I will write that up and send that back out to you if that's agreeable for you.
If there are not any more questions or any more discussion about the TEL survey, we'll move on to item number six, approval of this school year 2016 district funding assurances.
We have Ms. Blackman coming to share this with us, and we were joking around a little bit this morning. She's going to assure you of the assurances. Kind of what we've determined this is all about, so.
Let's get you, it's 48 pages, close to 400 questions, truly. So I'm sparing you that, I'm going to give you the down-low on it. If you look at what the big picture is of these assurances, it's an agreement made between our district and the KDE who manages the title money and the extra funding that we receive. If you looked at the questions, you would see it's mainly to assure, agree, that we are doing best practices, that we are using a collaboration between teachers, administrators, and in some cases, parents, to determine how the title money and other money is spent to assure that all students learn at a high level. Now, that's the skinny on it. But it has a series of questions, make it in procedures of what we do that's best practice to best spend the money. You have Title I money, that we do know that is used to assure that our most disadvantaged or at-risk students are given the extra time, the extra attention to break down barriers so that they achieve. You have Title II money, which is teacher quality. That with the flex funds that assures that our teachers are highly qualified, and not just highly qualified, but highly trained to give the best of instructional practice to our students. We have Title III, which breaks down the barriers for our children that come into our district that have the language barrier, that don't have the English, command of the English language, and so we give special attention to them. We do have our new Title VI money that we are using that, in addition to the Title I, we're doing some things, especially with our Tier III interventions, for those students that are not making academic progress to a level that we want them to. The homeless, we have money set aside for our homeless students, and believe it or not, we do have homeless families in this district. And that Catherine Webb is our coordinator, that she is, when we have someone register, she contacts them and provides opportunities of help so that they can come to school, that there's no need for them or any barrier for them to attend and to participate. Carl Perkins money, we know that's our technology money, our IDA money, a series of things that we have to make sure that we are providing all the best services for our students, the nutrition that we get to help provide the best lunches. And of course, we know we've had new guidelines for the nutrition, goes along with our health council. The flex funds, as you all have been talking about, gifted and talented. There's a series of questions, and again, it's 48 pages. And you heard Mr. Holzclaw talk about our monitoring visit we just finished. That was quite an ordeal. Thank goodness they only come around every 15 years. So whoever does it today, I won't be here in 15 years. Lucky them. But it did, it was, it was a great process, I'm going to tell you, because you had to show evidence that you were doing everything in these 48 pages. And great discussion, there are some things that we're going to improve on, and, but what you all are doing today is saying, yes, we agree that the assurances have been done, and I assure you that the assurances have been done. You all have any questions or concerns? Okay. Thank you very much.
So we need an approval for these funding assurances.
Yes, we do. We do need an approval.
I did try to do all 48 pages.
Oh, right. All right. You deserve some sort of award for that.
So is there an approval? Some moved, is there a second? Okay, so get a session, all right.
Yes, 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 you've had access to this. That's fine. I'm Mike. Go ahead, you need a motion. I'm going to be a vote.
Is there any discussion, any more questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? As heaven.
I'd like to follow up on one thing, Ms. Blackman, when she was talking about the homeless student. Mr. Hood is our DPP, pupil personnel, and would you give us a definition of what the state uses for homeless? Because it's this way across the state, probably across the nation, there's situations like this.
There's just, there's not a fixed, actually a fixed adequate service for them, not, meaning it could be a lot of, a lot of different things.
You could be staying in your uncle's home, or your relatives' home would be considered. So it's not just what we might think as homeless on the street kind of thing, I thought.
Right. And move from home to home.
Right, right.
Which is a complication for transportation to some of our places.
Bigs and adequate are underlying.
Bigs, yeah.
I just wanted you to understand that, that that's, you know, that's a common thing across, unfortunately, across the nation, so.
We're supposed to go on a short break.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is item number seven, approval of the 2015-16 extra service schedule.
This is our, typically our stipends that we give to coaches, directors, folks of that nature. And so, Mr. Downs will be sharing with you a couple of minor changes that we have on this, but this pretty much is intact. He's going to tell you about a couple, couple of changes that we made on it.
So the extra service, it changed very little this time. I'll just bring up a couple to let you know of what we did. The assist coach was in every building, and that was their continuous instructional improvement technology system. And we didn't ever really utilize that as we were getting into that system, and then now this system is beginning to be phased out a little bit from the state level. So we took that off, and then due to retirement, the R coordinator position had a little stipend to go with it, and we took that off. And as you recall, last month, you all approved our chairperson position. The things that were, there were three things that were added. Already on the schedule at the high school was an extra period, and this year, the high school's going to have, need to have two more extra periods. And just a reminder of what that is, it was a seven-period day, and one of those periods is a, is a planning period for that teacher. And so what they do is they end up teaching an extra class during that planning period, and they do their planning before or after school. And so we pay a $5,000 stipend for that. And what it saves us, it gives us a place for extra classes without having to hire a whole new position. So it's, we spend a little money, but we save a lot in doing it that way. So this year, we have an extra art class, we have an extra technology, industrial technology class, and we have an extra science class.
And for your information, board members, those teachers agreed to do that, they choose to do it. No one has made to do that, just in case you wonder.
And then we added the gifted and talented coordinators stipend, and really, it's just a shift, because our gifted and talented coordinator is also nationally board certified, and we were paying that same money from another, another spot, so we added it to the extra service schedule to account for that, that $2,000. And then the only other thing is that the middle school, if you're up in the middle school in the morning, all their kids from the whole middle school gather in the gym and in the breakfast area. And so we had, we had the extra staff to watch the breakfast area, and we didn't have any extra in the gym, and the numbers were growing there a little bit, and the principals tried to cover that, but a lot of times they get called out for various things in the morning, as you can imagine. And so Mr. Clark had asked for a little extra help in the gymnasium in the morning. And so those were the only changes that were made. All the others are the same, and so we're asking for your approval on the extra service schedule.
Motion approved.
Second. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? All right. Our next item is approval of the 2015-16 extended time schedule.
Okay, and this one, just for your information, we did not make any changes from the 14-15 school year. It's exactly the same on the extended time. So we would ask for your approval in this area.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, our next item is approval of the 2015-16 substitute teaching salary schedule.
That's fine also. And the salary schedule this year did not change. Just a reminder for you, for our substitutes, last year, we tweaked it a little bit to make sure that we were in line with Nelson and Bullitt in the same area, because we have a lot of people that substitute in the same areas, especially with Nelson County. So we mirrored their schedule, and so this year, we're not asking for any, any changes at all in the substitute salary schedule. So we ask for your approval of the schedule as it is.
Motion. Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right. Our next item, item number 10, is approval of the first reading of the board policy update.
And as a reminder to the board, we get these from the Kentucky School Board Association. We belong to their, their policy revisions, and we get them every year about this time. And a reminder, I put this paper on, on your desk, so just a reminder, there's 10 areas that these policies come from, and depending on the number that they start with, like all personnel is an O3. So that's the way you kind of interpret that. What I'd like to do is just call your attention to two or three that are in the pocket. Some are recommended, some are legal. Of course, the legal ones, you, I'll make them have to do. The recommended are the...
Is that the different color coding? Is it legal versus recommended versus what, what's the...
The colors is how they strike, what they, what they add in and what they strike out.
Just various colors in the document, I wonder if they will...
No, no, it doesn't, it doesn't go on the, on the different policies. It's how they, how they take things out and put things in. The first one, I'd like to call it to your attention briefly, is 3.13214. I don't know how you're, if you can pull that up very quickly, but it's, it's O3 dot 13214. It has to do with use of personal cell phones, telecommunications devices. Everybody found it?
Page 175.
I might have.
Is it certified?
It's only certified one.
Okay.
Certified, certified 0313.
It's 166.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's 03.23214. Wasn't paid.
166. Is this referencing certified or classified?
It's certified.
Okay, so then it is back on 166.
There's one for, there's one for certified, one for classified, and also one, it's the same policy, and then one for students, actually.
What are we looking for?
We're looking for certified. 0313214. That's the number for certified. Got it? Okay, I'm already doing better than last year, because last year, you had a red. And I just want to bring your attention to this one, because this is a very sensitive area. We, you can get into trouble real quick, confidentiality, when some staff member takes and either records a student doing something, a special needs student doing something, and the next thing you know, it's on social media. And so we want to make sure that our staff knows that this will, this is something that we cannot do unless it's approved beforehand by the administration, by the principal. So even though this was recommended, I thought it was, is one that we actually should have in there with our certified and our classifieds, and also, it falls in with our students also.
Well, but the parents have come in for a...
Now, it's got a, it has a provision in there about events like ball games and, and plays and those kind of things. Those are, that's okay. But, but during the school day, when, when it's not a social invited in event, then unless you have permission, you cannot film or record students.
Let me give you an example of what we read. The way it looked was, and this was not in our school district, this was the example given, the teacher had a child that had not been very successful in an area, and suddenly they were, and in a very positive thing, she, she videoed it, and then she sent that out to a family member who then placed it on a social media, and there you go. But it wasn't necessarily the parent, but it was meant to be a positive thing, but it, so these are the kind of things, you know, they're usually not, they're not reckless type of, you know, hateful, mean spirited type activities typically. They could be, but they're not.
We just want to make sure that we call attention to it beforehand when we go over these new policies with our staff, to make sure that we are very aware of that because of the confidentiality issues with it.
Were you addressing visitors to the building or you asking about this?
Yeah, he asked about that, and, and if you had a, let's say you had a play where you invited the public into it, then, then this, this policy doesn't restrict them from, from filming in a, in a big group.
But if the visitor was in a classroom?
Now, if the visitor was in a classroom, they would need to, they would need to know that beforehand, and the principal would need to relay that to them. Because, you know, they, if they were just, say they were just coming to look at, observe a teacher, and then, you know, film the, the entire classroom, well, you just can't, you just can't have that. So we want to call attention to it, just because of the confidentiality, especially with our, our special needs population, and then we have some students that aren't allowed to be photographed and those kind of things, and that'd be very sensitive to it, and that's why I wanted to call your attention to that particular one. I'll do one more, and just so, it's 3.18. It's in certified personnel. Tracy, you have a page number?
169, 168 is working in, well, no, 167, so it's the next page ever. Sorry.
And it's certified personnel, it's on evaluation, and I just want to call your attention, because this is our pages, professional growth effective system, because it goes into effect full blast in every, every district in the state. So all the pilots are over for that, for the regular teachers, and so it goes into effect. I just wanted to show you, show you that one. We added a few of our own that, that, they fall in the pocket like this, I'm just going to tell you about them, you don't necessarily need to look them all up. But this one, everywhere, we, we had a tobacco policy, anything that had to do with tobacco, we added the vapor and the alternative nicotine into it as being something that we, we don't do, because it wasn't addressed in our policy, so we added that in there to our own policies. The other thing is our, our policy did not have our school district the way we have like K1-2 or building set up, so we fixed that in, in this one also. So there were just a couple in there that I wanted to, wanted you to see. And this is the first reading, so what I would encourage you to do is take a look at these in, in, over the next month, and if you come back and have any, any concerns about any of them, especially if you look at the recommended ones, and, and you may think that maybe we not all tackle those at this time, just slightly now.
So we have to prove it?
So we have to prove, have to prove the first reading.
So I need most of that. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion, question? Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right. Item number 11 is approval of the expansion of our childcare facility lease.
I've asked Mr. Downs to maybe explain. I gave you some board notes that kind of gave you an idea of what we're looking at. We're expanding this program a bit. The thing I want to remind you is that, again, childcare is, and it has its own funding based on those fees that we do collect for daycare, and so this, this expansion is not going to be general fund money, but it will be daycare money. Mr. Downs, if you'll share some details with us?
Okay. And as you, you may remember, in August of last year, we got into a lease with the, for the property out on 859 Pennsylvania, which used to be a daycare just up to a, a year ago. There are three buildings on the property. We used the one with five classrooms in it, was the first lease that we, that we asked for, and it's worked very well too. And one of the things parents really like about it is when they pull in, they know exactly where the child is. And a lot of times, we use the elementary, we use the whole elementary. We may be in the gym, we may be in the library, we may be in the computer lab, and so it was kind of a search for that. But over the, over time, the bigger classes coming through have kind of ate up some of the rooms in the elementary, which caused us to, to move around a little bit. And then also, you approved the grant for the Snozleman room here recently, and so we used a reading lab in, in the elementary, was now going to be the Snozleman room, so the reading lab moved to the basement of the elementary. And that's also where one of the daycare rooms were. So that also, that made us have a need for a little bit more room. We serve 220 students in daycare. Of course, not every day, but over the course of, of time, we serve 220 students. So what we're asking to do is add this building to the existing lease, and the way it will work, it will mirror the same funding lease payments exactly. Our, our first lease runs out in two more years, so this lease will run out within in two years, so we'll be able to examine our, our options at the end of that. So it will mirror those two things. Our pre-registration numbers, they were really up, and they jumped a lot in July, which will also will necessitate a, a little more room to accommodate those. When, when we open this new building, we'll have enough room to add about 24 more students if we needed to. And the, and the ones that we already have pre-registered are enough to take care of the lease, and so that, I think we're going to be in good shape by taking on this new building. It's in great shape. We've already taken a look at it. It's going to take minimal amount to get it up and running.
Just to refresh your memory too, board members, that this is down the street from the early childhood building, about a half a block or so on the right-hand side, and it's going to be a very convenient location for us.
And it will house, those two buildings will house three and four-year-olds, K1 and 2. So all that area out on Templeton will use that daycare. Here, we'll have our third and fourth grade will be in the Tiger Dean in those two, those two rooms on the end, and our fifth and sixth grade will occupy the one room that we have left in the basement for after school. So it, it will, it will work well. So the parents knows, will be familiar with those buildings, and won't have to, won't have to worry about crossing over.
I only had two things, though. One was, it looked like there was a significant, it's also a 25% increase in the lease after the first period. That was a pretty substantial number for a percentage increase.
And just, I wish I had that copy, it's on my desk, but last year, when we did this, it was, the lease started out that way. We got a really cheap price to start with, and then it slowly increases. That was part of the deal.
Yeah, year two and year three going up.
A typical square foot, do you recall what daycare was? And we were, we were getting, I think the first year, we were getting it at $4, and typical, it was like $8 to $9.
Yeah. And we knew, and part of the reason for that, Mr. Stone, was that there were some things that needed to be improved, and they didn't really want to, we were going to fit that in, and so we wanted to lower the lease payment to start off with until we got it to market.
It went to like four, five, and seven, something like that, like the increases.
Which brings me to my next point on Exhibit B, 246 page on the bottom there, just a difference of definitions. In the lease, it's, where it's defined as the less E and the less R, but on here, it says tenant. That being us are making these improvements.
There's, there are certain things that we, that we will make improvements on. The major things, the heat and air and those kind of things, the landlord will be responsible for those major items.
On Exhibit B, we are responsible for those, is my understanding.
But replacing all the existing carpeting, and I mean, those are, I mean, they're not big time items or anything, but it just, definitions are different.
Well, and I think it works, and again, we get this deal because of the square footage. Some of this stuff, we could do a lot cheaper than if we had to pay for it to be done, so we're actually making money on that, on that sliding scale.
And you're talking about carpeting, this one all needs cleaning.
Mr. Downs, it does say that.
Only on the heat and air?
On Exhibit B, if you hear, come here and take this copy.
I'm sorry.
You'll be up with Mr. Stone.
Okay, and that, and those things in Exhibit B, we did last year at the other.
And this is for the previous building?
It's the previous building. That's what...
I'm not sure why we had that included.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they said, but this, all, all those things that we, that are on this list right here in Exhibit B, we did already in the building last year. This new building's not going to need, not going to need any of this.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm not sure why that's, that was last year.
Yes, we probably should indicate Exhibit B is, is not part of this.
Make a motion approved?
Okay, with the necessary changes in Exhibit B, is it...
We're going to like changes in Exhibit B?
I was going to say, we're going to not include Exhibit B, we'll let the minute show that.
All right. And we'll actually... I don't know what else I can...
Make a motion approved without Exhibit B?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Our next, thank...
I think I'm done.
Yeah. Thanks. Our next item is approval of the BG4. Uh-oh, Marston High School re-rue project.
Well, the good news is BG1 is beginning, and BG4 is the end.
Right.
So this is really good news that we're able to finally be able to bring this to the conclusions. Mr. Hood, share with us.
Yes, it has, it seems like it's taken some time to get everything right, and that's because we wanted to make sure everything was right before, before we let them get out, before we let them get out of here. And what I was waiting on more than anything was this binder that gives us the 20-year warranty in hand, and once we received that, then we made final payment, now has been made to GoHagen, I believe at the, maybe at the time, it had not been, but it has now final payment, which we were holding until everything was to our liking, which has been done by our architect and also Trimco, who gave us the warranty. So they have, they have signed off on everything, because we were a little concerned about some of the roof penetrations and some of the flashings. We made sure all of that was taken care of, and they checked and double-checked, and they do not give 20-year warranties unless they're for sure that, that it's going to be good. So I feel good about the roof in the high school, asking for approval for BG4, which does close out that project.
Make a motion approved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
The whole congregation's aye.
If it had leaked past month, it's not going to.
You're exactly right.
Our item number 13 is personnel resignation and transfer.
Just like to make you aware of that page of information there, take a look at it. Any questions, be glad to address them. That's all I have now, Chair.
We have approval of the leave of absence request.
I do have two of those, have maternity and a medical request, Family Medical Leave Act. Everything is in good order here. To be clear on that, one of those is an extended disability leave, the other one is family medical leave.
We can put those together, can't we?
We can, recommend.
I need a motion to approve this two items.
So recommend?
A motion and a second.
You got a motion and a second.
All at once. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Aye, seven. So we found, we have our site-based decision-making council minutes. Is there anything else that needs to be brought to the board? We need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, a second.
I'm moving now.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.